Okay, well, that's a lot easier. Welcome. Thank you for coming. This is Thursday, April 25th. This morning, we're going to have our special meeting. I'm going to call the special meeting to order. We'll have that first. So if you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'll note that we're going to have the elections for next year's officers. There we go. Okay. Here we go. Everybody, clearly Jaleen has been seated already, but the other two director elects have already been sworn in. So all of the contrast, the conflict of interest forums, everything is on file, they've all been done. So with that, I am going to leave the stage as Terry Hammond, as we are the directors exiting at the end of June. Our secretary, Kay Williams, is going to take over from here and... Good luck.
There are nine members on the incoming board. The majority to elect any office is five. If there is only one nominee for an office, official ballots will still be used. We have two tellers that are assisting us this morning, and Karen Repkin, of course, will also be assisting. They will be counting the ballots. The first order of business is the election of president. The floor is now open for nominations for president. Are there any nominations for president?
Okay, I declare my intent to run for president.
I'm sorry?
I declare my intent to run for president.
Thank you. Are there other nominations for president? Are there any other nominations for president? I know it sounds recording, but we have to ask the question twice. In that case, Jack, are you willing to accept the nomination for president?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Will you please distribute the ballots? We have eight votes in favor for Mr. Jack Leary. Congratulations to our new president.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And at this point, he will be taking over with the other officers. Thank you.
Okay, the floor is now open to nominations for vice president.
Thank you, incoming President Leary. Two items. One is, at the last meeting, you had indicated a nomination for me, and I am today declaring my acceptance of that as a candidate for the vice president position. And then the second is, in the spirit of the belief that every position should have choice, I am proud to also nominate my colleague, Mr. Dick Rhodes, as a candidate for vice president if he shall accept.
Are there other nominations for vice president? One more time, other nominations for vice president. Okay, nominations are now closed. Will the tellers please distribute the ballots for vice... Oh, I have to ask Dick Rhodes. Yeah, Mr. Rhodes, will you accept nomination for vice president?
Yes, I will.
Mr. Schlemmer, will you accept the nomination for vice president?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you. There have been eight votes. Alan Schlemmer received five. Dick Rhodes received three. Alan Schlemmer is our new vice president. The floor is now open for nominations for secretary.
I declare my candidacy for secretary. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for secretary? Are there any other nominations for secretary? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. There were seven votes and one abstention. Kay Williams is our new secretary with seven votes. Hey, the final office, excuse me, the final office to be, we will look at is treasurer. The floor is now open for nominations for treasurer. Yes, Alan, or Dennis, sorry. Christine, do you accept the nomination?
I do accept.
Are there other nominations for treasurer? Other nominations for treasurer? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. There were a total of eight votes. Christine Novello received all eight votes. She is our new treasurer. I thank you for, thank directors-elect Horvath and Graham for coming up. You can may return to your seats, and I'll ask for Directors Hammond and President Vines to return to the dais.
Oh, you can adjourn me.
That's coming.
I'd like to say congratulations to all the new officers that will assume their roles come 7-1. And I'd like to do one clarification. So people at home that are watching the meeting, that I know that there were two people that had declared at the workshop, and both of those people that had declare, had withdrawn their declarations. So that's why not they weren't asked today. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we'll move into the regular governing board meeting. I'm going to call the governing board meeting to order. Papers are out of order. We've already said the pledge of allegiance, so we won't be doing that. What I'd like to do first is, as announced earlier, oh, that's next. I have my agenda jock.
Sorry.
I would like to introduce our interim GM, Ken Olson. I'm going to ask him to come to the podium, so he can, everybody can meet him, and he's like to say a few words.
And I promise him it wouldn't be really long.
Take as long as you'd like.
Oh, that's all right. Hello, good morning, everyone. I've been, my wife and I have lived in Sun City West probably for, I always lose track, but I think it's at least 17 years. So we have watched the community change and evolve a little bit in that time. Over my background, just to give you a little insight into who I am and where I came from, I, my first, my first degree was in engineering and worked in a family business for about 25 years. And then I moved into a real estate and property management degree there. And so when I came from Minnesota, and unfortunately, I'm a Gopher fan, what can I say? We, yes, so we moved down here, and I've been doing, worked in the HOA industry in various forms for over 20 years. That's taken the form of general manager at all mass, large master plan properties, onsite properties. That's all I've ever done. I've worked as an executive at First Service Residential, which senior vice president in charge of their high-rise and large-scale property division. Moved on and served probably the, you may or may not be familiar, that I had served about six and a half years at Sun City Grand. That community across the tracks from Sun City West. And then I've done some consulting in the HOA business. And so right now that, I received a call back from the board about probably three, four weeks ago, and was asked if I'd be interested in considering applying for that, the position of interim. And I, and I thought about it, talked to my wife about it, and I think she encouraged me to get out of the house for six months or more, and said, yeah, I think it's a really exciting opportunity, because first of all, although I've lived here, I've worked so hard in the HOA trade and industry, you come home and you really don't have enough energy to start looking at your own community. So this is a way I get to know my community better, serve my community, and I think it's really an exciting opportunity. So this is where I'm at. My role here is really to kind of keep things going until they hire a full-time manager, which I think they already have a search committee in process, working with a recruiting firm. And I think it's important that that transition is smooth, and anything I can do as far as input, or as far as any kind of thoughts concerning, you know, operations, that kind of thing, we have, I started meeting the staff yesterday, they're very, very, really go-getting team, they're really exciting, and I'm really interested in getting to know them all better, along with the board members, too. So I'm looking forward to meeting and greeting a lot of the residents, too. We've lived here for many years, and I love this community, I'd never move. So this is, this is the place we want to live and the place I want to serve. So actually, I think the transition should be an exciting opportunity for me and the community, and in getting prepped for the new person that'll be running as general manager for many years, I hope. So I think that process is underway already, is that correct?
That is correct.
So anyhow, well, thank you very much for the opportunity just to give a little hello to everybody. And I always told the staff, I'm a collaborative manager, so the door is always open, and that applies to basically everybody in the community. So I think that's kind of where I'm at, and so if you see me on the street, if you have a question, don't worry about stopping and saying hi. So thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you. With that, I'll roll into 1.02. We do have a quorum. There are eight of us here. Director Hurley is out with an excused absence. We'll roll into 2.01. The regular governing board minutes approval from March 21st. If there are no changes, additions, or corrections, they will stand as written. Thank you. We'll also look at the April 1st, the special meeting minutes. Seeing there's no changes? Thank you. Stand as written. 3.01 is just a reminder to everybody here and those of you listening and watching at home, the committee applications deadline is May 15th. We encourage you, if you're interested in joining us on a standing committee, please go online and fill out an application. We love to have people involved with our committees. Like I said last, at our workshop, we've had more people join last year, and it was the committee chairs really had worked, their work cut out for them going through all of the applications. So please go online and fill out your applications. With that, we'll move into 3.02 with the CCNR's presentation from our manager, James Riley. Welcome, Riley. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me. I just want to make sure I've got this on here. Okay, we're all set. A topic came up in the last governing board meeting regarding squatters, and we're fortunate here in Sun City West, we don't deal with a whole lot of that, it's happened a few times, but I just wanted to inform people a little bit about what squatting, or it's a legal term, is adverse possession, and what that's all about. It requires a few things to happen. It has to be hostile, so there's no lease involved, there's no verbal... It has to be hostile, so there's no lease involved, there's no verbal permission granting someone to go onto a property and reside there. It has to be actual, the person has to truly be living at that property. It has to be open and notorious. So if you see somebody that is not your neighbor going in and out of their home, investigate, find out, let us know. Contact the sheriff's department immediately. And it has to be exclusive, it has to be one individual, it can't be a bunch of transient people moving in and out of an apartment that you see like in the city, that they often deal with there. And it has to be continuous and uninterrupted. For somebody to claim adverse possession in Arizona, it has to be a minimum of two years, most typically it has to be five to 10 years. And they have to give proof that they've improved that property and have resided there all that time. Some of the things that we actually deal with here in Sun City West, though, is a renter that stops paying the monthly rent fee and that is a tenant homeowner dispute typically gets resolved through litigation. And then we, the main things that we actually run into are when a homeowner has somebody come in, that's a family member to take care of them. And that individual either goes into a long-term care facility or unfortunately maybe passes away and the person resides in the home. These are the ones that we really want to know about. Typically, they may or may not age qualify and these usually get resolved through probate family decisions that are made, but we do want to know if there's somebody that's underage so that we can do what we need to do for that individual. Most important thing you can do is protect your home. If you're a snowbird or if you're going on an extended vacation, make sure your home is secure. Windows, doors, make sure they're all locked. Your garage, criminals have found a way to foil garage doors, so don't just rely on the genie garage door opener to keep your garage closed, lock it, put a padlock on it, make sure it is secure before you go. Install security systems or motion cameras, I've got a few of them in my own home too. It notifies me on my phone if somebody's inside my home. It's a great inexpensive option. Ask your neighbors, get to know your neighbors so that they can take a look at your home. I happen to live next door to a snowbird and every day when I get home, I just go for a walk around his house, make sure everything's secure and safe. And then also Posse has a Vacation Watch. This is a great program, you can sign up for it, they will go out on a continuous basis, check your home, make sure it's secure. And if anything is found to be disruptive, they will contact the sheriff's department for you. And then also again, if you see something, somebody roaming around on your neighbor's yard that doesn't belong there, contact MCSO, call the sheriff's department. If you see somebody breaking in, please again, call 911. This is, as Captain Stutzman says, if you see something, say something and say it now. Don't wait till tomorrow, don't wait to call the CCNR department, call the sheriff's department, that's what they're there for. I'd be happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, Directors. Ms. Director Rhodes?
Hey Riley, thank you very much. This is, this is very helpful. My question's probably obvious to you, but it says that the squatter must have actively lived in the property for two, a minimum of two years. So what is the two-year marker? Does that officially make it an adverse occupancy? What if they're just in there for a month or two months?
That, that is one, two years would be one that could actually say, go to court and say, I own this home. That's adverse possession.
Okay.
Two months, somebody moving into someone's house for two months unbeknownst to the owner, that's breaking an N R A.
Okay.
That's when you call the police and they can come take them away. There is some legislation, I think Mr. Mieders is going to speak on it as well, that they're trying to get through the House and the Senate to put more details into that, which supposedly will help law enforcement out. We're taking a look at it, I'm going to have a little bit more information down the road here.
I guess I've just, I always thought there was a certain amount of bureaucracy that went into this to try to, to remove someone. If you see someone in there, can you just call the police and say they've been here for six weeks and out they go? Or do you have to get some kind of a restraining order or some kind of a court order?
It could, and that's where it can depend on the situation. If it's a, say it's a family member that's moved in because, you know, grandma passed away and they, they moved into the house unbeknownst to the rest of the family, that can be a sticky situation with the family. They may have to actually go to court to have that person removed. That's again, that's if you see something, say something, let us know about it right away. If it looks like somebody that you, you don't know, contact MCSO so they can check it out. Because the quicker they're aware of it, the faster it is to get that person removed from the property.
Any other direct comments? Okay, Director Schlummer?
Thank you. Thank you Riley for the presentation. I actually was at a meeting at the Posse a week or so back and this topic came up there as well and they had someone from the MCSO there and not to directly quote them, but the advice he gave folks is if you do return to your home after a vacation or if you're a snowbird and you're away for the summer and you come back and there is someone in your home, it kind of goes without saying, but he reminded everybody, do not confront them. He said immediately call the sheriff and let them deal with it because you don't know whether or not they are harmful or not harmful, unless of course it's a family member and you're a, you know, obviously that might be a little bit different situation. But I just thought it was a good warning to folks, if you do come back and someone's in your home, be safe, call the 911 number and get the sheriff out there.
Yeah, and Captain Stutzman would definitely say to do just that, they'd much rather err on the side of caution than, than have anybody get hurt. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any, Riley, hold on, any audience questions for Riley before we let him go? Great, thank you so much, appreciate it Riley, great presentation, thank you. With that, we're going to move into 3.04 with the final 2024, 2025 bowling rates recommendation. Director Hammond?
President Vines, I believe we skipped point three.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, we skipped 303 because I had it, I had a special mark next to it, so I just kind of crossed right over it, thank you, Director Novello. I did my maiden mark right next to it. So we will go back to 3.03, petitioning guidelines approval with Director Pajkowski. And before I let you read your motion, Director Pajkowski, I want to just give a little comment on this so people have a little understanding of where this is coming from. This is just, petitioning during civic and general elections is producing more and more controversy as time goes on. The board was asked to produce written rules regarding petitioning expectation and practices. A guidelines document under consideration at agenda item 3.03 has been created and attorney reviewed. It mandates what RCSCW expects regarding petitioner and petitioning practices regarding all civic or general efforts. As clarification, it will be available from the governing board executive assistant who needs to collect information from all outside resident or other petitioners as they check in with the governing board executive assistant with petitions. With that, Director Pajkowski, if you would read your motion.
I move that the governing board adopt the set of petitioning guidelines regarding civic political activity petitioning on RCSCW property in line with policy LO4, which is authorized use of association property for civic political activity and corollary policies of LO1, altercations, inappropriate conduct, or unsafe conduct on association property, and L13, authorized use of association property for association-specific political activity.
Thank you, Director Leary. Do you want to open up for discussion?
Oh, sure. Any discussion from the board?
Director Rhodes?
So do I understand that this has been vetted through our attorney?
It has.
It has all?
It has.
And so this will actually affect multiple, one, two, three, three separate policies?
It's to support the policies.
Will this be a policy in and of itself?
No, it's just guidelines. It's only guidelines, it's not a policy.
So my understanding is that Karen had petitioners come in? Because we had nothing written down, they felt that they didn't have to go by what she was saying. So now that we have it written down, she can give it to the petitioner, correct?
Do you want a microphone? Do you want a microphone? Karen, you should really be out of microphone.
I had a resident petitioner come in on a civic issue. It's really a federal election year, it's really a federal election or a state election issue. We always have simply shared our petitioning rules with petitioners and never had pushback. This time we had pushback and therefore we have written petitioner rules for our governing board elections, but not for civic, state, federal petitioners, outside resident or non, they're outside petitioners. So I wrote exactly what our rules are and the attorney reviewed them, produced this set of guidelines which will be handed out when petitioners approach me because I always have to understand who's on our property, what they're petitioning about, and tell them what our rules are because our residents can't be interfered with in terms of enjoying amenities. So we are very protective of our residents. We're private property, the number one question I get is why do we have petitioners? We're private property. No, we allow petitioners. We can't turn them away, but they must follow our rules. So this is simply a written set of guidelines to hand out to them. And that's how this was born. That makes sense, Jolene, do you want?
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Any more, Director Rhodes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little confused on this because this isn't going to be codified in any way. This isn't going to be a policy, this isn't going to be, this is just going to be a handout. So this is bits and pieces of multiple policies that we have, that we've kind of gathered together and it's been reviewed by our council.
Yes, it was even strengthened by the council, yes. It really reflects our policies, but it's a set of written guidelines that were requested because this person did not want to just be told what our rules are, she wanted to see them in writing.
I'm not really arguing with that, I appreciate the, the position you're in Karen and, but I just need to get this framed in my mind, what are we doing here? And what we're really doing is we're, we're producing information that is synthesized from multiple policies and to say, okay, here it is. I, I guess the flip side of that is that we would produce all three of those policies and send them out to say, you know, this is in here.
No, these are just the guidelines that they have to stay within these set of guidelines. So if, sure, go ahead, Director Leary.
So these are, if you think of the policies as the statement of what needs to be done, then this, these guidelines are the how the policy is to be adhered to. So this is the, these are the directions that you would give. So they are not codified in that sense, they are the how they are to be implemented by a petitioner.
So if I may, can I, as an example, we had somebody petitioning and a resident didn't want to sign the petition. And the petitioner was very forceful and was getting in the person's face and the resident, there was pushback. And so because we didn't have any guidelines in writing to tell the petitioner, well, okay, you're going to be removed from our property. And the person said, you didn't, you didn't show me anything in writing that tells me that. So now we have the guidelines and, and I will say in regards to these guidelines that were written, the only change that James Hazelwood made, that council made, was the one bullet point where we said you would be
Invited.
Invited to leave our premises, he changed the word, you will be directed to leave our premises. Everything else was perfect in the guidelines. And it goes with, it can be used with each one of those policies when they ask to come petition on our property.
You know, I, I really don't want to make a big issue out of this, but I, I just, it, it just doesn't, it just doesn't really sit with me. I mean, I understand the need for this, but unless something is codified somewhere where we're constantly reviewing this, and that's one of the, the things of our policies, you know, every committee reviews all of our policies annually, but this is going to be outside of that, this document will be outside of that. So I, I guess in theory, we could, it could sit on, we could use it for 10 years and it would never change. You know, so it's, it's okay. I, I think that we need this, I, I think it'll make your life a lot easier, Karen, 100% and I'm very supportive of that. But I, this is just really a working document.
Simply in response to a resident request. Ma'am? If there are no other comments. Okay, Director Schlummer?
Thank you, Chairman. There actually is precedent for this type of a document in our properties policies. There is a policy with regard to the naming of our, of our facilities. And within that policy, there is reference to a guideline. That guideline is reviewed as part of the policy review each year. And although we do not have editorial authority over the guideline, because that is up to the staff, we do have input authority over the guideline. I think this is the same type of situation and what I would encourage us to do is at our next review of the appropriate policies that tie to this, we would add a reference to this guideline in that policy, which would then give us the right to each year, make an annual review of it and make alteration recommendations to the staff. But I do, it's an unfortunate statement on society that we have to have this, but we do. And it has become a bigger issue and whether you're at Fry's or you're in our parking lots, more and more people are tackling you at your car door. The one other thing I would like us to consider in this is we talk about not, not blocking doorways and things of that nature. When I was a candidate and I was collecting my signatures, an experience I will never forget, and I was standing out in the rec centers, one of the things that people, that I was told is do not, do not go within 20 or 25 feet of the, of the doorway. I'd like to see us put that in a specific guideline because the way it reads now, an individual could stand directly outside of the entrance to the RH Johnson pool and tackle you on your way out. And I think we need to have some specific ruling around, you can't just not block the doorway, you got to be a little bit away from the building. Get people, let people get in and out.
So you would like the verbiage to say as opposed to do not block sidewalks or doorways? You would like it to say with, do not block sidewalks or go within 25 feet of doorways to facilities?
Yeah, I, I made some notes when I reviewed this and that's why I have a 25-foot rule for not, for blocking of doorways and, and things of that nature, so that there would be a 25-foot rule or approximately 25 feet to put them out closer to the main walkway.
I'd like to actually get this redlined so that we can give Karen the note. So if you want to give it the exact verbiage of what you would like it to say, we can give it to Karen and move it forward. With that verbiage. Okay. While you're thinking, Alan, I'll go to Director Rhodes.
So I, I guess in light of Alan's reference to having guidelines and, and I think, I think there's your very positive, I really do. I, I just want to somehow formalize this so we can look at it and have some sense of, of review on it, you know, scheduled review. So if we can attach it as a guideline or attachment to one or all of the policies, I think I'd feel better about it then, but because of the systematic review that we'd have of it.
Okay, as properties, do you want it attached to LO4, all, all of the L policies mentioned? Or?
I think that should be dealt with when we do the review in September. I'm making, I'm making a note of it now to do that at that time when we do our annual review of all the policies referencing to facilities. Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. Are, if you're, you're ready to go, Director Schlummer? Are you, you're ready to go, Director Schlemmer?
So currently, we have the language in item, bullet item two, do not block sidewalks or doorways of, to facilities, buildings, stand to the side of walkways. I would say, do not block sidewalks, or come within 25 feet of doorways to facilities, buildings, stand to the side of the walkways.
Karen, were you able to get that? So are we able to move this forward, Karen, with the redline, to go with, forward with the 30-day posting if we get the motion? With the, with the proviso that the L policies will be done in next year's review? Correct. We have to... Right. Correct. So Jolene will have to reread the amended motion. I'm sorry, Jolene. Those are the rules? You'll just have to reread the motion with the amended.
With the amended.
With the amended.
I move that the governing board adopts the set of petition guidelines regarding civic political activity, petitioning on RCSCW property in the line with policy L-04, authorized use of association property for civic political activity, and corollary policies, L-01, altercations, inappropriate conduct, or unsafe conduct on association property, and L-13, authorized use of association property for association-specific political activity, as amended, from Alan. Okay. With amended language.
Director Hammond, are you good with that? Okay, great.
We're good?
Okay. Karen, we're good? Thank you. Now that the board has all of their ducks in a row, I believe, we're going to go ahead and go to audience comments. So with that, I'll ask that please state your name, your rec card number, and direct all your comments to the chairs, please.
131829, Nick Turner. I share Director Rhodes' concerns, again, about that this should be something which is reviewed annually. And I also have another couple of other concerns. One is, guidelines are guidelines, rules are rules. These should be rules, not guidelines, if they're going to be enforced. They have to be a rule, not a guideline. I mean, a guideline's just general guidance. Also, in the, in the middle section, there's a bullet point there, which says, if multiple resident complaints are received, you will also be directed to leave. That needs to be clarified, that because if you have 10 people who support candidate B, they could make complaints about the behavior of people who are collecting petitions on behalf of candidate A, and if multiple residents have complained, they're going to be directed to leave. That person could in fact be following the guidelines or rules perfectly, but if 10 people complain about it, these say they will be asked to leave. That's not, should not be happening. If multiple complaints are received, there should be an investigation, and if the investigation decides that the rules have been broken, that candidate should, that petitioner should then be asked to leave. Also, I believe it's a good and prudent policy to have people state in advance who is going to be collecting signatures and where, and when, simply because we can notify staff, and we can make sure that those petitioners are behaving properly. But I'm not sure that that is a requirement by Arizona law. I had a look at the, at the plan community laws and the, and so on. So we need to be, I know we've had legal advice here, but I'm not sure that's part of Arizona law. But again, I think it's something that, I agree, we should be asking people to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, to remind everybody, that this is not pertaining to the governing board elections. This is pertaining to civic and general elections.
Yeah, yes, I know. The community may impose reasonable restrictions on people engaging in civic political activity, and I believe these are reasonable restrictions. I'm just saying that I believe there's potentially one clash with Arizona law, and that bullet about multiple resident complaints needs tightening up, to stop people just putting in spoilers.
Thank you.
Sharon Hedic, 106159. I agree completely with what he just stated, in regards to the, somebody else coming up and making problems for the person who's abiding by the rules. My second part question is, who's enforcing this, and how is it being enforced?
All, as always, all the complaints are given to the governing board executive assistant, and then the investigation goes through her, and staff is brought in.
Okay, so if this is happening on the sidewalk, and someone's having a problem, who are they, who's coming out to enforce this? Are we just calling the sheriff? Because isn't that who enforces this?
Typically, if the sheriff is needed, that's who's called.
Okay. So who's doing that, is what I'm asking? Is that Karen, because she gets all the information together, and she takes care of it, or is it someone else on staff that's doing it?
In the past, when it happened, I know we directed the staff to go ahead and call the sheriff when that happened.
Thank you.
If there aren't any additional questions? Hold on. So with the two questions that were just asked, we're going to take this back to counsel and have him address the two questions, and this will be brought back after we have those answers. We'll table this. Postpone. I know, sorry, Bonnie. No, you don't like that word. Postpone. Now, we'll move on to 3.04, final 2024-2025 bowling rates, with our sports pavilion chairperson, Terry Hammond.
I move that the governing board approve the fiscal year 2024-25 bowling rates as recommended by the sports pavilion bowling committee.
I'll second that.
Any questions from the directors? Any discussion on bowling rates? Any questions from the audience before we vote? Let's go ahead and vote. Terry, will you read your motion again, please?
I move that the governing board approve the fiscal year 2024-25 bowling rates as recommended by the sports pavilion bowling committee.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes.
Jolene?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Director's motion carries. We will move on to 3.05. Revised Policy C.03, Standing Committees of the Governing Board. Vice President Jack Leary will read this.
I move that the governing board approve the insertion of new language at Section 2 of Revised Policy C.03, entitled Standing Committees of the Governing Board, as redlined.
Thank you, Director Leary. Thank you, Director Williams, for the second. We have any questions from the board on this policy? Director Rhodes?
Yeah. The only point I have on this is that, as I understand it, a standing, a committee member can only serve for two years.
Consecutively, on the same committee, and they can move to another committee?
Editorially, I would say that, I think that's, that's a bit restrictive, but I could probably live with that.
Okay. Any other directors? Director Schlemmer?
I share the concern on, on two years, and my thought process on it is this. We elect governing board members for a term of three years. And to be very candid, being on a committee or being on the board, your first year is really mostly a learning experience. You're trying to find your way, you're trying to understand, and all of those things. I mean, it's good three or four months before I think you are really up to speed. I worry that on a two-year limitation, we have a drain of experience. I would recommend that we be consistent with what we do with the governing board, and make this a three-year term limit, rather than a two-year term limit.
Director Leary?
I have a question for Director Schlemmer. Using the governing board as a model, would you also have the stand-down year in between, serving on any committee?
Yes, I didn't have any problem with that part of this, this. It was that two-year window that... But yes, I would agree with your concept of a break year where you don't serve on anything.
Exactly.
That concept I would, I would agree with as well.
Director Pajaskowski?
Good job. I would agree, too.
I'm doing my best to do the last name.
Just like the governing board, three years, stand-down a year.
It gives... Stand down a year before they can go to any other committee?
Any other committee. It gives the residents other opportunities.
Okay. Director Novello?
Again, I have no problem with the two-year. I think the idea is to enable the flow of ideas and concepts, and to, I do definitely support the stand-down year. I think that's a wonderful idea, but I believe, my read of this is that the intention is to allow more residents to participate in the process. We had record numbers of people apply last year, and I'm really hopeful that we'll see that again this year. So again, I'm in support of the language as it currently is, but I'm open to change, of course.
Thank you. Director Williams?
I also support the two years. I think we have had far too long with the same people in the good old boy system, mending up on our committees. I think it is very important that we encourage our owner members to participate and get involved, and I see no problem at all with the, with the two-year timeline. I think it's healthy, and I think it's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Williams. I want to share with everybody that, kind of the background on this, this came about because we, as Director Novello stated, we have so many people last year, and we're hopeful that this year it's going to continue and maybe get bigger, that wanting to join the standing committees, and it's, and it's wonderful for us to see that. And we have committees that have committee members that have been on for four and five years consecutively on the same committee. So the only way we can fix that is to implement some rules into their, into the policy. So we're trying to come up with some guidelines for that. So Director Leary?
Thank you, President Vines. The, I've received some feedback on this. One of the concerns that I've received from owner members is the implementation of this. Whether it's two years or three years, the concern is that because we do have a fair number of committee members who are at that two-year mark or beyond, that you might see wholesale depletion of committee members, and therefore, the knowledge and the tribal knowledge that the committee has. So that is a concern. I don't know if we need to worry about that within this policy, but I think the implementation of it has been, has been raised as a concern.
I think, give me one sec, Director Rhodes. In regards to that, Jack, that's a really great observation, but starting this year, chairing the sports pavilion committee was the first year, because this was my third year chairing it. I actually had, the first year, I had a full committee, and I only had two, one or two returning members to that committee. The rest were all new committee members, and so having that turnover, and it was great. It was wonderful, working with all new people and having them come in fresh. So I don't think it is going to matter. I think it's exciting, get that turnover, you bring new people in. Director Rhodes?
I would like to remind everyone that at the, the committee member's term expires at the end of the year, you know, and there very well could be a new chairman, and that chairman can select whoever he or she wishes to have. I've been on, I've chaired budget and finance for, for two consecutive years, and each year, we've had a minimum of a 50% turnover. And, and I know that this year, just from what I've heard from some of the members, that they're not going to come back. So I think the cleansing is there. I do, I am still concerned, and I, I think that Director Schlemmer really kind of hit it on the head when he talked about, you know, losing the corporate knowledge, you know, and the experience. So I don't want to argue too much on this, because I think that I could live with the either way. I think three's a better number. It mirrors what we do as a, as a governing board, and at the end of the year, you're, technically, your term is done. And so, you know...
Director Leary?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that I am not against this, but I just wanted to raise the concern expressed to me by owner members, that there could be a complete depletion of that tribal or corporate knowledge, depending upon how this is implemented. That's my, that's the only thing, the message I was passing on.
Thank you. Director Novello?
And to that point, I hear it and I understand it as well. One of the things that, in my, I guess, former career, you know, recent experience, we would experiment with things, right? So I would have, since we're discussing it here, we've expressed that that could be a concern. We could, should we go forward with this? If we realize, oh, that was not a good idea, we do want to come up with some way to permit, you know, some deviation from, whatever. We can experiment with this. So if there is a depletion on some of the committees, I believe Director Rhodes referred to the fact that there may be a burgeoning natural turnover on some of the committees. But regardless, I love the idea of codifying the ability to change. I would have no problem having the committee chairs, whomever they are, modify, and look at this, and report back next year and say, this, this turnover, this resulted in a 100% turnover, and it really slowed the committee down. I think we'll see that. I would be fine with, with moving forward, and I acknowledge that it could be a concern. But I'd really, whatever we do, I really strongly encourage us to implement something like this.
Thank you, Director Novello. Director Williams?
Just for the benefit of the audience, I would like to tell you that last year, I had a hun, I had 47 people that had completed the form that we asked people to submit if they're interested in serving on a standing committee. I had 47 people interested in being on the properties committee. They were contacted, they were interviewed, and selections were made. That was a phenomenon. Five, six years ago, we were crying for people to even get that minimum of seven or maximum of nine on a committee. So we have generated more interest, we've gotten more owner opening their eyes, attending more meetings, and want to get involved, and I think that is exactly where we need to go with our... and want to get involved. And I think that is exactly where we need to go with our community and with this board for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we need to come to a decision as far as... Director Pajaskowski?
Yes. So, the 2.22, after serving two consecutive years, is that going to be gone then? Because we, we said three years?
It would either be two years or three years would be the decision.
But so they could go from one committee to another or they're going to have a stand-down?
Well, as it stands now, it reads that it would be a two-year term and then they can go to another committee. And somebody proposed that, I think it was Director Schlemmer or Director Leary, I forget who now, that said that we should be consistent with the governing board and have that one-year break for everybody. I think that that's an outstanding idea. We, we didn't think about that. I think that that's a great idea to be consistent with that and have a one-year break in between. So whether we now determine whether it's going to be a two-year or three-year is the question. And then do we want to additionally add the language in there for the one-year break? Those are the two questions. Director Leary?
So the other, the other question to make it fully compatible with how the governing board does it is do we want to say that one-third of the committee turns over every year? If we're, if, okay, that's fine. Just asking the question.
Let's break this down, I guess, into two. We'll do... Director Hammond, did you want to speak?
If I understood what Jack just said, I don't think you need to put that in there because directors don't resign at the end of the year. Committee members resign.
Right.
And so, their term will end on whatever.
Good, good point.
But I strongly support putting into three years.
So let's go ahead and let's do a consensus around, if we can, as far as what Director Hammond just brought forward so we can move forward on that, as far as the, going from a two-year to a three-year. Those in favor changing 2.2 from a two-year to a three-year? If you're in favor, just kind of give me what, what Director Rhodes has given me. I would like that. So, okay. So, Director, you want a roll call because Directors Novello and Director Pajaskowski are no votes. Oh, you're, oh, you're a yes. Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry. It's Director Williams and Director Novello's are the no votes.
Again, I'm fine, but my vote would be for two.
For two. Do you still need a roll call? Thank you. Put it three years. By the vote. Who knows? And then the other, the other vote would then be to also add to the red line for adding a one-year break. When that three years is up, after you serve three years on one committee, you must have a one-year break before you can jump to another committee. On any committee, correct. So that'll fall right in line with the governing board. If we're all in consensus on that?
I believe it's in 2.2.2 is the language change we're talking about. I'm repeat, I'm repeating it into the microphone so that we get it on the recording. I believe, what did I just volunteer for? After serving two consecutive, after serving three consecutive years on any governing board standing committee, a governing board standing committee member must stand down for a one-year period before serving on any committee again.
So what happens? Just Director Hammond, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't understand. I can see going from the same committee. But why, why not, I mean, if you're on properties and you've served your three years, but you want to serve on finance?
They want, they want to keep in line, in uniform with the governing board.
Governing board says you can't come back on the governing board, that's all.
No.
That's what this is.
That was just what was thrown out. If you have a no vote, you can vote no.
Exactly. That was just the suggestion. It's not me. I'm saying that's the suggestion that's been, that was talked about off microphone and I'm repeating it into the microphone for our at-home audience. Director Hammond?
Yeah, I agree that they shouldn't come back on the same committee, but I don't understand why they can't go.
So right now, the, the question is, that it says you may go to another committee, directly to another committee. And what's the question, what's, the language change would be, no, you must serve a one-year break completely before you jump committees.
I can support it. I don't understand.
You don't have to support. If you don't like it, you can vote no.
Director Schlemmer?
So the idea of the, the idea of the three years was to make it consistent to the governing board. The idea of the break, the intent of this policy proposal is to allow for rotation of talent, more involvement of our residents, so that you don't have people who get onto a committee and just stay on, stay on, stay on, stay on. So we have new and fresh ideas coming in. So the idea of the one-year break, in my opinion, is that it allows them, it ensures that we don't have people who are just moving from committee to committee, that we're bringing in some new talent. To case point, 47 people applying for a committee. So, if you have people who have to step away for a year, that opens the door. I think that's what, what this is going after. That's why I would support it.
Thank you, Director Schlemmer.
With that, I'd like to move forward and ask everybody, just by a show of hands, please. If we're going to, I'd like to change the language to add a one-year break after your three years would be up on the committee you're serving. By a show of hands?
That's 2.22, right?
Yes, it's in 2.22. And it's any committee, you must serve a one-year break before you jump to another committee.
Director Pajaskowski seems to have questions on 2.2.1.
No. Right, yes. Thank you. There were no no votes on that. That is correct. No no vote. That sounds awfully funny, no no vote. And Cliff keeps laughing at me, by the way, in the front row. And every time he laughs at me, I, I make a ding here. That's one less piece of chocolate he gets.
That's harsh.
I know, I know. It's, I can only do what I can do. So, Director Pajaskowski?
The 2.21, then that goes bye-bye because it says that you can go from one committee to another committee, right?
That would then go bye-bye. That's what that means.
So then 2.2.2 goes to 2.21?
Yes.
Perfect.
That would have, it'd become 2.2.1 and 2.2.3 would become 2.2.2. Y'all see how much fun you could have if you ran for the governing board?
Loads. It really is.
It really is. Now, I'm going to open it up for audience comments before we go for an actual vote. And the rules are the same, Nick. I'm not going to repeat them.
131829. Nick Turner, I'm, I'm concerned about, I think it disappeared from the screen now, but I think it's 2.3, the prohibition on chartered club board members being on standing committees. I think you're going to reduce your pool of volunteers and, and a lot of cases, experience significantly if you bring that in. And I also doubt that a club board member is going to be any less biased than an enthusiastic club member. And I know that many of you here on the governing board, of course, cannot be governing board members of clubs, but I know that you are also enthusiastic members of clubs. I think what would perhaps be more beneficial in order to not close off membership of committees to club board members would be having a declaration of the clubs that they are members of and clubs that they are officers of and an expectation that they would recuse and abstain on any recommendations which affect those clubs. I think that's far better than prohibiting.
Thank you. This had nothing to do with them being biased. It had to do with all the comments we got from residents coming up and, and saying, so in order for me to get something done for my club, I have to serve on a standing committee. That way I have a better shot at getting something done for my club. Because if it appeared to them as if they're, they're an officer or they're a board member in a club and they serve on a standing committee, the last few years, they felt like they were, we were showing favoritism to get things done in clubs.
That, that would apply to you being an enthusiastic member of the club as well as a board member.
No, no. They felt like the clubs were getting, I can, we can name clubs that they, that they named and, and we didn't think that that was right.
And I can, I can name a club officer who recused themselves and abstained on a vote on the committee. That's why I say there's an expectation that they should recuse and they should abstain. Simply being on the committee, you're, you're turning away experience.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jim Scott, 133818. Every one of you guys had a very good insight from coming at this issue. And I just want to throw one more variable in it.
Okay.
I like the idea of bringing more talent into the pool. However, I too am concerned about experience leaving. And I guess so my thought would be, I like the two-year idea, but I don't like the one-year lay-down. So my thought was, why not, if somebody comes in, they get, they're in for two years and don't, we, we want to capitalize on that energy and that input, allowing them to do two, two, two years and then a one-year lay-down. Four years, yeah, they'd be doing two, two committees.
Oh, allowing them to, to jump to another committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you do two years as one committee. If they want to continue, two years in another committee. By then they're, they're versed and a little more knowledgeable. And then lay down on, on year five.
I like that. Thank you.
Kind of a culmination of everything.
Hold on. Director Schlemmer has a question for you.
First, thank you for your suggestion. My question is, would you do it as two and two? Or would you be open to allowing people to serve up to three on a single committee and they may go to another committee for a, for that fourth year? So, could it be two and two or a combination of three and one or one and three so that the fourth year? The genesis of my concern being, experience is big, especially on some of these more complicated committees. And so, my concern is two years sometimes isn't enough. So maybe that third year and then they can go, because committee terms are technically only one year. So, is it the four years you're going after or is it the combination of two and two?
Culmin, the culmination. Director Williams, I, I like the idea of steering things up. Of not having the good old boy, you know. And so I like the idea and... Director Novello's, Novello. I like the idea of two-year, keeping the energy, keeping the ideas current. And, and, and then I'm concerned about your thought as well of, is two years enough? I think we're getting, if they go into another committee on their, you know, I think we'll, we'll be able to benefit from that. I think it's, it's just, I don't know. It just, it was an idea that I think it's, it's win, 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 win.
Thank you.
Anyways.
Thank you. Any more questions? So, we do have an online comment, but let's finish with the audience questions.
Hi, my name is Judy Thompson, 131313. I have a concern of two years on a standing committee. I'm probably one of those people that overstayed my welcome on a committee only because of a, a project that we were working on. But I will say that it took three years in order for me to be extremely comfortable and feel like I finished completion of all the things that I wanted to do on that committee. In the first year, you're learning. In the second year, you might be charged with certain subcommittees. You're trying to get your liaisons all cleared away. And then in the third year, I honestly feel like that's the year that you feel like you're contributing the most. The other thing I'm a little concerned about is turnover. If we're going to have a new director for that committee, as well as all new turnover, I think that's a lot to ask. Could there be possibility of two-thirds turnover? Instead of, you know, all turnover on a particular year? Or as we're initiating this whole process, could we just this first year have a possibility of maybe one or two committee members staying for another year as we're deciding how to process with this? That's my thought. Thank you.
Nick Turner, 131829. Thought just popped into my head is that if the prohibition on club board directors remains, it should probably also apply to special committees as well as standing committees. Because special committees may be looking at things which affect the long-term future of specific clubs.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Director Rhodes?
I want to amplify on something that Mr. Turner talked about and that has to do with having a charter club officers beyond committees. Actually, this prohibits that and I'm not sure that's a good idea. I, I think that we have a process in place. I think there's two things that we have in place. One of which is the actual interview process that the chairman of the committee goes through when they select the new committee members. And objectivity, bias, looking out for the good of the community, those are really big issues that we talk about. I've done this for two years and Kay had 41 or 47. I think I had 37 or 38 that we talked with. And during the interview process, you know that that person is biased and that's not who you want on the committee. So, between that and their term expiring at the end of the year. The other thing is that people that are club officers, they're the ones that are really invested in the community and those are the ones that have, that have interest in, in doing something. We have a process and I don't know who it was that mentioned it, but when you have a conflict of interest, you either recuse yourself, you announce it or whatever. That's the process that we need to follow. So, kind of summarize this. I don't support the restriction of a club officer being on a, one of the subcommittees of the, of the governing board. I think that that's, that's an unnecessary restriction. So, thank you.
Any other director comments?
Any other director comments?
I do have one comment.
Okay. Director Pajaskowski?
Does this also apply to the Sunset West golf clubs? You know, how we have, no.
No, we have, no.
No, I mean like the men's club?
No, they are standalone. They are standalone. They belong to the golf council. They're a separate entity. But they, they belong to the, they don't...
The golf clubs are chartered clubs, and, and they fall under the umbrella of chartered clubs. Yes, they are, yeah, because chartered clubs is a standing committee, so they would be impacted as well. So we would not be able to have, according to the way this is written, we wouldn't have any of those club, golf club board members be on a standing committee, nor would they be able to serve more than two consecutive years. So the rules would apply to them as well.
Director Novello?
Just to clarify, I thought that the question was, the, these policies pertain to the governing board's standing committees.
Correct.
Full stop. We have five. That's it.
That is full stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, would you like to read our online comment, please?
We have a bunch of them, so bear with me.
At one point, we only had one, so now they've...
When I finish, we'll have lunch. Harry Bach, 135435. There have been complaints about how committee chairs and members are chosen, in that friends or like-minded are chosen. This update does not address any of these concerns. To alleviate these concerns, maybe committee chair should be selected by a vote of the governing board, and committee members should be chosen by a vote of three governing board members, one of which is the committee chair. Second one, Sue Fitzsimmons, governing board chairpersons already have the ability to determine how long a person serves. Read the committee chairperson handbook. And then she puts, cites 131313. Sue Fitzsimmons, 131313 is the recommendation, do not lock yourselves into rigid restrictions. Some committees may need to be large or small. T Meister, Mary Ganett, 133113, three years is good with one year off, they can still bring their experience back with them when they return. There should be classes required for new governing board members to help them. And then Sue Fitzsimmons comes back again, the guidelines for chairpersons have this info already outlined, definitely allow, definitely allow three years. Get together when you make your choices, just because you are a club officer should not exclude, I assume she means exclude you. That's all of them, thank you.
Well, that was good.
It looked like more, trust me.
Okay. Well done. Thank you, Director Schlemmer. So, if you would... Director Larry, want to say something?
No, you want me to read this again?
I would like you to read it again.
The motion again? So I move that the governing board, well, before I read the motion, is this, are we, should we re, take this back and redo it? Okay, so I'm not going to read the motion again.
As there's a motion on the floor, just a point of clarification or order, do you, we need a motion to postpone?
He has to read the motion before we can vote.
Okay, so I will read the motion.
Correct.
I move that the governing board approve the insertion of new language at section two of revised policy C03 entitled Standing Committees of the Governing Board as redlined. As amended.
You know Bonnie's a stickler. Yes. No, he just said as amended, so. A, let me clarify, a yes vote will move it forward, a no vote will send it back for further review.
We've had such great ideas here, put forward to us by the, by the directors as well as by our residents. I would say, sorry, I was put on the spot first. Yes.
Can I have a rule of order here a minute?
Point of order.
Point of order. What is amendments?
Thank you, I had to consider that.
Before I vote, I knew you were hung up on that. What is amendments?
Okay, Jack, I'll read the amendments.
So the, we would, statement number 2.2.1 would be removed. Statement 2.2.2 becomes 2.2.1, and will say, after serving three consecutive years on any governing board standing committee, a governing board standing committee member must stand down for a one-year period before serving on any committee again. And then the other one that's proposed is 2.3, whether that language should be in there And 2.2 would go from, would say, committee members may serve a maximum of three consecutive years on any one governing board standing committee, instead of two.
Thank you for repeating those.
So there was discussion on whether a chartered club board member may serve, this, the document reads, governing board standing committee members may not also be board members of any chartered clubs during the term that they serve as governing board standing committee members. I don't believe we reached a conclusion on whether this should be included or not.
We, we did not, and I would say, at this point, you would have to vote on, come to consensus on these individually before you can just do it across the board. You'll have to do it individually, Jack. Director Williams?
I think this conversation has certainly generated that this is not the perfect document. I would really propose that we send it back for more study and review, period.
Correct.
And take no action on any one section or the other today. I think it's too important to rush into, we've had lots of good ideas brought up.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see us go back to the drawing board and come back a little more organized than this is. Thank you.
I second that.
I think that's an outstanding idea, Director Williams.
I don't, could I say, I don't think we need to do that, in all due respect. I think that the only two issues that I see here, one of them we've agreed on, and that's the, the three-year limit, and the second one is the question of a, of a, of a standing, of a committee, a charter club officer being on a standing committee. That's the only thing that I see. So I would, if you would strike that 2.3?
We have not agreed on anything, Director Rhodes. I apologize, but we need to look at these individually, and I'm happy to do that, if you want. I'm happy to have Jack go through them one by one, and, and we can come to consensus one by one before we move the document, document either forward, backwards, stop.
Okay, one more time. So the first change that I will go over is, concerns the term limit and the stand-down period. So that will affect statements number 2.2. Committee members may serve a maximum of three consecutive years on any one governing board standing committee. 2.2.1, you want them done individually, okay, so we'll stop with 2.2.
Right. So I'm going to call for a, actually, we're going to do a roll call vote, so it's clear. Do them individually on 2.2, to go from a two-year to a three-year term on 2.2. Director Hammond?
Yes.
Director Rhodes?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
Director Larry?
Yes.
Director Williams?
No.
Yes. Director Novello?
Yes.
At a vote of six to one, is that what it was? Seven to one? I didn't vote, so six to one. Six to one, I was right the first time. I did not vote, six to one. It will pass at three years. I am, go. Never a motion? Director Larry?
Okay, so the next thing, next thing that we're going to look at is, due to the change of 2.2, paragraph number 2.2.1 will be struck. You want me to read what's being struck?
Yes.
Okay. 2.2.1, what is being struck, struck is, after serving two consecutive years on a governing board standing committee, an individual may serve up to two, two consecutive years on a governing board committee, other than the committee on which they just served. So that is being struck.
All in agreement? Right across the board, unanimous, unanimous across the board. That one's good. Or with Director Larry?
Okay.
2.2.2.
Paragraph 2.2.2 will be amended to read, after serving three consecutive years on any governing board standing committee, a governing board standing committee member must stand down for a one-year period before serving on any committee, on any committee
All in favor? Across the board? Director Larry?
So the, the question here for...
Also, point of order, that Director Larry, 2.2.2 then becomes 2.2.1.
Yes, 2.2.2 becomes 2.2.1, and 2.2.3, which is not under discussion, becomes 2.2.2. Okay? And the last one under consideration is paragraph 2.3, which says, governing board standing committee members may not also be board members of any chartered clubs during the terms they serve as governing board standing committee members.
We're going to do a voice vote, Director Novello? Yes means keep it. We keep it. No means we remove it. Director Pajaskowski?
I'm going to say no.
Okay.
No.
Director Larry?
Can I vote against it, since it's my motion?
Yeah, oh no, we're voting now, so you just couldn't...
Okay.
We're voting, so yes, you can.
I will say no, then.
Director Schlemmer? Director Rhodes?
And no removes it. No.
No removes it. I had to look to Jack at that point, I'm so confused. Director Hammond? No removes it. So it's unanimous. And that is done. No, we, yeah, it'll be redlined and come back. We will vote now on, Jack, you have to read the...
Yeah, I have to read the motion again.
With the amendments.
I move that the governing board approve, I'm sorry, approve the insertion of new language at section two of revised policy C03 entitled Standing Committees of the Governing Board as redlined and as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Point of order, we are now voting to approve the whole policy.
As amended, as amended.
Okay.
A yes vote says, yes please. Unanimous. Alan wants french fries. Moving on. Got to cross it up, let's not do it again. Moving on to 3.06, new policy M03, cardholder guest, daily guest fee policy. Director Larry? Is that right?
That is correct. I move that the governing board approve new policy M03 entitled cardholder guest/daily guest fee policy as redlined.
Any discussion, directors? Any questions from the audience on this? Cross your fingers.
Let me read it again.
Would you read the motion, and we'll call for a vote.
I move that the governing board approve new policy M03 entitled cardholder guest/daily guest fee policy as redlined.
Thank you, Director Larry. I'm going to call for a vote. A yes vote moves this forward, a no vote? I did call for audience questions. I called for audience questions, nobody, nobody moved. Nobody got a vote. A yes vote moves it forward, a no vote? How's that? Director Hammond?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Oh, thank heavens. Thank heavens. Don't wait it across. This one's, hopefully the next one's going to be equally as easy. The next one is 3.07. The motion is Director Williams, it's policy FAO8.
I move that the governing board retire policy FAO8 guest credit policy.
Thank you. Any questions, directors? Any questions from the audience? All right. You wouldn't mind reading your motion again, please?
I would be pleased to do that.
Thank you.
I move that the governing board retire policy FAO8 guest credit policy.
Again, we're going to do this one more time. Yes is...
Yes.
We're moving it, retiring that policy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, directors. Appreciate that. Policy FAO8 will be retired. M03 replaces it. This is where I'd like to take a break and go home. Because this is where we're going to have fun, Cliff. Oh, hasn't? Oh, you know what? I was really joking, but at this point, we are going to take a five-minute bio break. Thank you. See you. Lean because if you chirp and fall, there's a whole nother thing. Lower. So we are back to order. Aren't you glad that whole other section is done? No? Okay. Wait, oh, I lost somebody, was somebody playing with my papers? Okay, we are up to 3.09, the 50K pullouts. Oh, I'm sorry, again, y'all have to see what I do here. I make these little marks on my paper, on my agenda, just so that I, it reminds me that I have something I have to read. And then I bypass this whole thing. So for 3.08, capital fiscal year 2024, 2025 capital expenditures. At the April regular meeting every year, the board votes to approve the capital budget. In May, we will approve the full budget. We approve the capital budget in two parts. Projects from the $50,000 to $99,999, and then projects $100,000 or more. Again, projects under $50,000 fall under the discretion of the GM. However, the board has knowledge of all such projects per the plan that Carl Wilhelm presents. All projects are listed in the document on the screen. There it is. Thank you, Terry. The board approves all $50,000 to, and $100,000 projects on a consent or grouped basis minus any projects we decide to pull out for further discussion and examination. The consent approval approach saves a lot of time, or we would have to go through a motion on every single project. Pulled projects will be voted on individually. I also want to point out that if defeated, any R and R or replace and repair project simply moves into the next fiscal year as, as it is embedded in the reserve study, while new capital, capital projects, if defeated, are dead unless reintroduced in a subsequent year. Today, we have four pulled individual items in the capital budget for further examination. In the 50K group, we have pulled out one new capital project, the Coontz tennis courts renovation design. In the 100,000 group, we have pulled three projects. One R and R project, the 495,000 softball field outfield fence, and two new capital projects. The $225,000 project for lizard acres renovation and the $100,000 library expansion design. So with that, we are going to move forward and let the motions begin, or let the games begin, with Director Rhodes have this.
Okay, thank you, President Vines. I'm going to, we're going to start this process, this is not new. We have, we have studied this and studied this and gone through it. All of our committees have gone through it. So what we have now is kind of a culmination of, of actually many hours of study and review. I'll go through these and I'll have to read the, the motions. They sound a little bureaucratic, but we need to do that, just to go through the, the entire process. The first is item 3.08. It's the capital expenditures of $50,000 to $999,000. I move that the governing board approve, in total, the expenditures for the projects or expenses in the amount shown in the FY 2024/25 capital budget review of items $50,000 to $99,999, with the exception of the $50,000 Coontz tennis court renovation design. And we authorize the general manager to sign the contracts, purchase orders, and/or the check for each project or expense.
Thank you, Director Hammond. We're open for discussion, directors?
This is a, let me just start something here. This is a very sensitive issue. We have a, a facility that basically has gone fallow, and this attempt was to, was to do something, to move it forward. We have some issues that we're dealing with between some of our chartered clubs that would, could affect what hap, what happens here. So we need to give this some serious consideration.
A point of order, I apologize for the interruption, we are discussing 3.08. Which is the consent motion.
That's exactly what we're doing. And I, and I am just talking-
About 3.09.
I'm talking about 3.08.
Okay.
Okay, so the, so when we, you're, actually, you're right on that, Christine.
You've moved on to 3.09.
I am, I am sorry.
Yeah.
You, you're right. You know, I, I was premature on my, on my comments.
Move forward with-
So, so let's, we'll go ahead and, this is a consent approval.
Correct.
So.
If there's no discussion on this? Do we have any comments from the audience?
Jim Scott, 133818. I didn't think I was going to get a shot to say something about this. I question the flagpoles. What community benefit of $30,000 do we have with three flagpoles versus drawing up documents for $50,000 on the Coontz courts, where there's community benefit there?
Do you want me to address this, or would you like to take it, Director Rhodes?
I, I would say that, and I, and I really, that anything under $50,000 is the discretionary authority of the general manager. Now, I've heard the general manager say in previous discussions that we're trying to respect the, the, our, our proud heritage as, as Americans and, and to honor our veterans for that. And I believe that those are the three areas that we don't have flagpoles in now. So part of this is an issue of aesthetics and demonstrating respect and the, and being proud of being an American, I get, I think, I mean, I, I'm paraphrasing what I've heard. But the bottom line here is the general manager does have discretionary authority on anything under $50,000, and even cumulatively, these are under $50,000. And it wouldn't necessarily be under the review of this process that we're going through right now.
And if I may, it was also brought to his attention by multiple residents at the time, and the general manager at the time chose to put that in the budget.
That's one of the beauties of Sun City West, is, is that old glory is pretty dominant, and I love, don't get me wrong, nothing more I like doing, doing the pledge of allegiance, remembering, you know, who we are, what we stand for. But I also understand that, you know, there, the dues continue to go up and people are on fixed income, and I'm just looking for community benefit when we go to spend your dollar or their dollar versus something that doesn't necessarily have, it has benefit, but it's not tangible. So I just leave it at that. I just, hopefully, we're, we're thinking twice when we spend 30 grand on a flagpole versus redoing those Coontz locked-up courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and, Dick, you would read the motion again, we'll go ahead and vote.
I move that the governing board approve in total the expenditures for the projects or expenses in the amount shown in the fiscal year 2024/25 capital budget review of items $50,000 and $99,999, with the exception of the $50,000 Coontz tennis court renovation design, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for each project or expense.
This will be a voice vote. Director Hammond, a, a yes moves this forward, gives consent for this, a no?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
Thank you, directors. Unanimous? 3.09. Director Rhodes, we'll move on to 3.09.
3.09. This is a motion to pull out the Coontz tennis court renovation. I move that the governing board approve the expenditure for the Coontz tennis renovation design in the amount of $50,000 as shown in the FY 24/25 capital budget, and authorize the general manager the, the contract to, to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for this project or expense.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And this is the time, thank you, Director Novello. In my enthusiasm to, to move this along, I prematurely made comments about this particular issue. The Coontz courts are, are very controversial. Many of us have been out there. Many of us have been out there. We know what condition they're in. What are we going to do with them? We have to do something with it. We're landlocked. The, there's so much controversy on what these are going to be used for. By approving this, I don't think it designates what it's going to be, but it's, it at least puts it on the approval list.
Director Leary?
So my thought on this is that the 50K is only for a design. It's not to actually do the work of improving those courts or repairing them. So the end result of this would be a decision on what those courts are to be. So we would have that. But we do have, we've received a lot of feedback from club members, from homeowners. The pickleball club and the tennis club each independently said that they don't see the value of keeping these courts as they are. So there's some discussion about if we were to use them for some other purpose, there would be a knock-on effect where we'd have to consider parking, restrooms, and all those types of things if we were to convert them to another purpose. The other aspect of this, or another aspect of this, is we are going to be implementing a long-range or strategic plan committee. This is one of the, these courts are one of the last places we have in Sun City West that we can do something with. Yeah, it, yeah, tangible property that we have, it may behoove us to not make a decision on this and wait till we get a more comprehensive view of what our requirements and our needs are.
Thank you, Director Leary. Director Novello?
Thank you, President Vines. It's a, we've gone back and forth on this for quite a while. I know one of the concerns that I had, in addition to the fact that the space is currently unusable, or most of it is really unusable by anyone, and we don't want that to continue. So I believe our last questioner, or one of our last questioners, had asked, why would we consider removing it? At the time of removal, we've been discussing this for about eight or nine months now. I believe in the, either the board or someone on staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the project as originally presented to us was only to come up with a design to renovate as a tennis court, provided that this is a design, I think it's important to clarify what this design would be. If it's a general-purpose design for how to use the facility, that would be one thing. But if it's strictly to renovate it into tennis courts, I think we need to be clear on that. Director Leary is well aware, Vice President Leary, excuse me, how important the strategic, I believe the strategic planning type of exercise is. So I'm wholly in support of looking at that and including this. But I'm just a little unclear on what we're approving here versus long-term. I'd hate to see us here in another year having the same conversation about how to move forward. That's all.
So just let me make it clear. So what 3.09 is, this is slated to be pulled out of the budget and not moved forward at all with the $50,000 at all, and, and it.
But if it were to be approved, what is this project? That's what I was asking, President.
The thought process was, I think there were several reiterations of what it was to be used for originally. The concept was pickleball. Then pickleball said they didn't want it. Then they said, well, we'll look at tennis. And so I think Jack said it best when he said, perhaps we should let the strategic plan, master plan committee that is going to be put together and let them determine the best possible use for this court.
Thank you for the clarification, President Vines.
So the genesis of this request is that this property, this facility, is on the repair and replace list. So that's the reason why it's on there. It would be on there to repair and replace it as is. So this is, you know, there's, then, then of course, when it was on there as repair and replace, and everybody said, well, let's think about doing something else with it. So, but if we're going to be strict about it, it's an R and R type of thing.
It's listed as a new capital.
Yeah, that's, it got morphed into that, but that was the original genesis.
Director Williams?
It's the recommendation of the properties committee that this item be removed and that $50,000 not be spent at this time. We realize that many of the things that we deal with on the properties committee really require, in this particular case, what Jack had just mentioned, it's our last available space to use, and therefore, we feel that it should not be considered at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Williams. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Director Schlemmer. Any other comments from the directors before we go to audience? Director Rhodes?
So, and Director Williams is right, is that the properties, as did budget and finance, and I believe charter, I don't know if charter clubs are, but anyway, it was a fairly unanimous feeling that we should pull this off. The concern I have, and I've kind of rethought this, the concern I have is that, given the fact that we're looking at some type of a strategic plan, and we want to do that as quickly as we can, if we approve this, doesn't mean it has to be done right now. It just means that it would, the money would be available for next year. And this would give us a little bit of, be a little bit more nimble financially if we wanted to take a more prompt action on it. Yes.
Director Leary?
So this is a question, I'm going to direct it to Cliff. My understanding is this was an R and R item originally. If we pull this out, does that mean that the money remains in the R and R budget for future consideration?
Yes, the, the Coontz Tennis Center is on the reserve study to be converted from the current asphalt base that it is to a post-stentioned concrete base, which regardless of what type of court sport, court sport you'd put on it, you would need to do. Now, if it's not going to be a court sport surface and something else, then there's nothing in the budget for that. That would be a new capital. And the original proposal was to make it a combination pickleball and tennis facility, not just one or the other. There was, the original concept, it was going to be essentially half pickleball, half tennis with a, with a kind of gathering area in the middle. That was the original kind of idea concept.
So, but the, it's in the R and R as a, as six tennis courts, I believe?
It is, yep, yep. It's in the, yep.
So that if, and there's a dollar amount associated with that?
I think it's about 600,000, 650,000, yep.
Okay. So if we do, if we do nothing with this, that 600K will still be?
Stays in the reserve study, and then, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate it. If there are no more, no more comments from the directors, we'll go to audience comments, and then we'll do online.
Sharon Haddock, 106159. Speaking here for, I'm not exactly sure where this fits in with the Coontz project, but there is a track that goes around that's a walking track that is not up to ADA standards. It's completely where you can fall off of it, where the rocks don't come up, where my husband fell and was sent to the hospital. It's not now, I assume, that when you pull, put this in, that that would be looked at at the same time that you look at the courts. So if you're pulling that, that's fine, but I'd certainly like at least someone to go back and look at the track itself. It has cracks through it that you can't walk on, and the rocks do not come up. There's a six-inch drop-off on each of the sides as you walk the track. So I just assumed that that was going to be included in looking at, because the track goes around the whole area. And so I appreciate it that if someone at least looks at this from the ADA side.
Okay, thank you.
And a comment is, you're not looking at a strategic plan, you're looking at a master plan. Keep in mind that they are two entirely different things. One is an implementation of a plan, the other is developing a plan. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. If there are no more audience comments, we'll go to online comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is from Bruce Lee's. It's a bit of a procedural question. It was, and his number is 135422. It was my understanding that both the budget and finance committee and the governing board decided to remove or pull out the 50K for the Coontz tennis facility. Why is the board now voting to keep it?
At the workshop, we address the pullouts, and now at the governing board meeting is where we actually vote. We don't vote at the workshop. We come to consensus, and then they're put on the agenda for the actual vote to pull them out.
If I can add clarity to that?
Sure, of course.
The motion actually sounds like the motion is saying to approve, and I think that's what's confusing them, but that's just because that's the way the motion has to be written.
Right, right. Was there any other?
That was it.
Oh, great, thank you. Director Leary?
I think it's worth noting that a pullout does not mean that something is yanked out of the budget. It means it's pulled out for separate discussion, which is what we're doing now. So maybe that's where the confusion comes in in terms of what that term means.
We're required to pull them out of the budget, and then we vote on them individually. We have to address them individually. It allows the directors the chance to, I guess if you will, plead their case, and then the other directors, you can address them individually, and they may have merit to leave them in along the way. If there's no more discussion, Dick, if you wouldn't mind reading your motion again, please.
Thank you. I move that the governing board approve the expenditure for the Coontz tennis renovation design in the amount of $50,000 as shown in the FY 24-25 capital budget, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or checks for this project or expense.
Thank you. So a yes vote pulls it, and it comes out of the budget completely?
No.
No, the other way around, sorry. Did I get that wrong? Okay. So reverse that. A yes vote leaves it in, a no vote. Do we have that right? Okay. Ready to go? Terry?
No.
Director Rhodes?
No.
Director Schlemmer?
No.
No.
No. No.
No.
We are unanimous. 50K will be pulled out. We will move on to 3.10. Motion of capital expenditures, projects $100,000 and above, consent approval of that motion.
Okay, I'll just go right ahead and go right into the, to the motion.
Thank you.
I move that the governing board approve in total the expenditures for the projects or expenses in the amount shown on the FY 24-25 capital budget review of items $100,000 or over, with the exception of the $495,000 softball outfield fence replacement, $225,000 for Lizard Acres Pub renovation, and the $100,000 library expansion design. And we authorize the general manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for each project or expense.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We're open for discussion?
Nope.
Any comments from the audience? On this, we'll go ahead and vote. Oh, read it.
Okay, I'll read it again. This is the capital expenditure projects, $100,000 consent approval. I move that the governing board approve in total the expenditures for projects or expenses in the amount shown in the FY 2024-25 capital budget review of items $100,000 or over, with the exception of the $495,000 softball outfield fence replacement, $225,000 for Lizard Acres Pub renovation, and the $100,000 library expansion design, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for each project or expense.
Thank you, Director Rhodes. Director Novello, we'll start with you. A yes vote is, we're good? It'll pass? No, is you're not good?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, directors. I accidentally marked somebody as a no vote. Unanimous. Very good. We'll move on to 3.11. Director Rhodes with the pullout of the softball fence.
Yes, this, we'll have, we'll have three items that'll be three consecutive motions that I'll only talk about item 3.1 right now. This is the motion to pull out the softball fence, the softball outfield fence replacement. I move that the governing board approve the expenditure for the softball outfield fence replacement in the amount of $495,000 as shown on the FY 2024-25 capital budget, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for this project or expense.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. We're open for discussion? Director Leary?
The Chartered Clubs Committee approved this expense. They would like to see the fence replaced.
As a point of order, I believe that you meant that they recommended we approve, correct?
I'm sure that's what I meant, yes.
It just comes up time and time again. I'm so sorry, Vice President.
I don't know what, I don't know what I said.
It's a long warning.
Next committee chair will recognize you, but I'm sure that's what he meant.
I made a point of order which doesn't require that. Thank you, President Vines.
The properties committee recommends that this money not be spent at this time to replace this $495,000 outfield fence at the softball field. Thank you.
Director Schlemmer?
So one additional comment on this. I think there's no question that the time's going to come that this fence has to get replaced. One of the considerations I have had with regard to this came out of my work on the properties committee, which is when you replace this fence, at the, in the softball field, there is a warning track that runs along the perimeter of the fence. It's about eight or 10 feet wide, something like that. It is a soft compound that's laid and installed. When you go to replace that fence, that warning track has to be peeled back, and then the fence gets replaced, and then that warning track has to be put back in place. The warning track is going to come due for replacement at some point in the, you know, in the relative near future. I don't know exactly when. I'm not talking like tomorrow or anything, but over the next couple of years, that will as normal root repair and replacement. It makes more sense to me and I, to time those two together, because we're going to expend money to pull that track up and put it back down, and then in a few years, we're going to expend money to pull that track up and replace it. Why don't we do it all at the same time and have that economy of scale? So that was one of my primary considerations in evaluating to not include this in next year's budget.
We were just given a date by our CFO of 2029 on that. So I'm, I'm going to ask Russ Boston to please come to the podium and maybe give us some little more information on this, because I think there are some other concerns. because I think there are some other concerns that might have come into play. Good morning.
So when we did the walkthrough with properties, we found two severed posts, which raised a safety concern. So in the midst, Clifford asked us to get some opinions. We're not fence experts by no stretch of the imagination, so we reached out to a well-renowned fence company. We walked the entire job, and he felt very confident that it's not falling down tomorrow or anytime soon, so it was very sound. Actually, the two cracks that we found, the broken spots, were supports for added netting in the back, that we feel that that's what caused those two pieces to fail, and then of course, we, we fixed those right away. So we do have time to wait, and it does make sense, what, what Ellen is suggesting, to do it all at once, because it, it has to be done. The minute we do the fence, it all has to be done anyways.
And, and we're com- we're confident, or comfortable, I guess, comfortable would be the better word, I guess, that 2029 will, while it's not right around the corner, that we think that that fence is going to hold out until then?
Yes.
We're good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
So much. Any additional director comments? Any audience comments on this subject? No? No? Okay. So, Dick, if you'll read your motion, please. I'm sorry, I had to stop and think whose motion it was for a minute.
This is the motion for the pullout of the softball outfield fence replacement. I move the Governing Board approve the expenditure for the softball outfield fence replacement in the amount of $495,000 as shown in the FY 2024-25 capital budget, and I, and authorize the General Manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for this project or expense.
Thank you. So we're going to call for a voice vote. A no vote means it comes out of the budget. A yes vote means it will stay in the budget. Director Hammond?
No.
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 Director Larry?
I am voting, as instructed by the Chartered Clubs Committee, the answer is yes.
I am voting as the Properties Committee has this expertise to decide on, and the answer is no. Thank you.
Oh, my. Oh, my. Oh, my. Okay. Director Pajaskowski? I don't know how to know who you're going to vote for, but was it a no vote?
I just voted no.
No, okay. Director Novello?
No.
Okay. Okay, so at a vote of six to one, no. Thank you, directors. We need the levity, yeah. We absolutely need the levity to get through here. We absolutely do. The end is in sight. The end is in sight. Director Rhodes, 3.12, please.
3.12 is, is the motion to pull out Lizard Acres Pub renovations. I move that the Governing Board approve the expenditure for $225,000 Lizard Acres Pub renovation in the amount of $225,000 as shown in FY 2024-25 capital budget, and we authorize the General Manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and our check for this project or expense.
Second. Director Hammond, second? Thank you. Open for discussion?
Well, the Chartered Clubs did not weigh in on this one, so I'm not going to get burned.
Does that mean you don't have an opinion, though?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, okay. So do, we don't have any board discussion on, oh, Director Novello?
Oh, come on.
Yeah, please.
I, I only want to point out before we take a vote that I, I have a, a potential conflict of interest that's on file with the state of Arizona. As an entertainer or a member of, somebody who entertains, there is an opportunity for me to perform within Sun City West, therefore I do have a potential conflict of interest that's on file. So now that I've cited that, I'm able to make a vote or abstain as necessary.
Thank you for declaring, Director Novello. With no other comment. Oh, Director Rhodes?
I think, I have a, a comment about this. Lizard Acres Pub, I think, is, is a bit different. This is one that the, the entire, this is very, very popular.
Yes.
It's a very popular thing. This, this was kind of a default project, because we, we, we opened it, and the next thing you know, we had out, we had outgrown it. And I think this is something that I would be, I would be very supportive of. $225,000 is a lot of money in anybody's book, but it does generate revenue. It generates around $60,000 a year in revenue. So it's not like, it's, it's not, there would be a, a four-year payback, four-and-a-half-year payback on this, so, and I know that we don't do ROI's and, and, and paybacks, but I think this one is a little bit different. I would, I would be, I would speak in favor of this.
Oh, Director Larry?
I didn't say that.
No, but I was saying, I'm calling you, you, don't you want to speak? I see your hand going to your mic.
Yes, I do. I would like to speak. The, the challenge I have with this is, one, it's part of our contingency plan based upon the amount of money that we need should the $18 per hour minimum wage go into effect January 1, 2025. The other, the, so, so I think we need to consider that. Another challenge that I have with this is that while it's, the renovation would make the pub more pleasing to be in, it does very little to increase the incremental revenue that we have, and I would therefore say that the incremental revenue would, the payback would be a lot longer than four years, because we can only have to look at the, you know, 225K, and how much more we would get over the 60K that we're already getting per month. So that, that's, those are my concerns.
Director Williams, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just once again, that the Properties Committee recommended that this be removed from the budget, feeling that it was not timely and not critical. It gets back to what we revert to all the time, wants versus needs, and Santa Claus only comes in December.
I'd also like to point out that now we have opened the door for other areas regarding Lizard Acres Pub, and this is an ADA compliance thing as far as that goes, so we do need stationary tables in there. So also, we don't have a proper fire door exit in there, so regardless whether we move forward with this or not, Carl is still going to have to move forward with putting in there a proper fire door exit, so that is still going to have to happen. I'm not sure, Cliff, as CFO, has he discussed with you the cost of the, I, I don't know, he didn't discuss with me, that what the cost would be for doing the fire door, but that will still have to go forward, because we have, if you will, exposed our hand to Maricopa County, so that we didn't have a proper, we have a fire, an exit, but it's not a proper fire door exit, so we, but we do need stationary tables, because right now people just like to move them wherever they want them, which now we don't have, we're not ADA compliant. People are just moving them anywhere they want, so we're doing that. So, and as I said, from almost the beginning, Lizard Acres has sustained itself and, and then some, so it's become quite the place for people to go and enjoy themselves and, and hang out, and, and as Christine said, we have bands that come in, we have on Friday nights, and we have karaoke, and they do trivia, and people go in there and play in the afternoons, they do, they have card groups that go in there from people that don't belong to card groups within charter clubs, and play Mahjong, and, and darts are in there. So it's a venue that people can go that don't belong to any type of charter clubs, and it's become quite the hangout spot for many people, so we're trying to make it, bring it up to ADA code, and like I said, all of that happening, and, and it needs more freezer space and a longer bar, and so all these things had to come into play, so a cost of 225 was actually not an exorbitant amount of money to make this happen. So that's all that Carl had wanted me to share with everybody, because he had to take his leave to celebrate his birthday, so we granted him that. But if there's no further, oh, Director Novello?
Thank you, President Vines. Since there was a discussion about payback and ROI, not something that we do with everything, in my, I believe that we've also discussed in committees and so forth, regardless of the disposition here, we can consider many of these investments, if you will, not so much, they don't have to always pay back, sometimes it's just an amenity. And I, I believe, President Vines, that's what you and your committee, when you were chairing that committee, the committee that was looking at this, it really came about as a way to enhance an amenity, not a way to make money, if you will. So thank you. I just wanted to add that comment.
That's correct. Thank you, Director Novello, for pointing that out. It's just another amenity for the community. If there's no other comments, Dr., oh, didn't I already ask for audience comments? I thought, I thought I did, and, but I'm happy to ask again. No? Okay. So if you'll read it, your motion again, then we'll vote.
We will. This is for the Lizard Acres Pub renovation. I move that the Governing Board approve the expenditure for $225,000 Lizard Acres Pub renovation in the amount of $225,000 as shown on the FY 2024-25 capital budget, and to authorize the General Manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and our check for this purpose or expense.
A yes vote is to leave it in and move it forward, and a no vote is to pull it out.
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
This is a tough one. I'm going to say yes.
Director Larry?
No.
No.
My God, was that emphatic?
No.
Director Novello? You're welcome to abstain. Karen, I, I have a, a 3-3 call, and I will, oh, I don't often get to vote here. This is very unusual for me, but I am going to vote yes.
No surprise.
So Lizard Acres will stay in. Director Rhodes, we'll move on to 3.13, the library expansion pullout.
I'll start by reading the motion. I move that the Governing Board approve the expenditure for the library expansion design in the amount of $100,000 as shown in the FY 2024-25 capital budget, and authorize the General Manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and our check for this project or expense.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. Any discussion? Director Larry?
The presentation for the library expansion design was done some time ago, and it generated a lot of excitement. It showed what the possibility of our library could be. The, however, I think that the request to move forward with that project is premature, just as we did not approve the Coontz redesign, in part because of the need for a, a master plan slash strategic plan. I think we should do the same thing for the, this larger expenditure for the library. So I would say do not move this forward.
Thank you, Director.
At this time.
Thank you, Director Larry. Any other comments from the directors? Any comments from the audience? Do we have any online comments? Okay. Thank you. Director Rhodes, if you'll read your motion again, we'll put it for a vote.
I move that the Governing Board approve the expenditure for the library expansion design in the amount of $100,000 as shown in the FY 2024-25 capital budget, and I, and authorize the General Manager to sign the contract, purchase order, and/or check for this project or expense.
Thank you. A no vote pulls it out, and a yes vote leaves it in. Is that right? I think Karen does this purposely in her wording of her motions.
I guess.
Is that right? Didn't I say that? I said that properly. Okay. I think she does it just to confuse me. Okay. So, Director Novello?
No.
Director Pajaskowski?
No.
Director Williams?
No.
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 All right. We are up to board comments. Directors, we thank you for all of that on the budget. I appreciate it. Director Novello?
Just a, a comment for future consideration, President Vines. Could we have one of our mobile microphones available at the table for the parliamentarian and the executive assistant, should, should they need to interject, and that way they can be heard on recording?
So noted, we did offer her one, she did not want one.
If I was to the parliamentarian, typically donated people.
Thank you. Director Pajaskowski?
I'm good.
Thank you. Director Williams?
It's been fun. I'm glad we got this far. I commend the board for working together on this budget, because it has been a labor of love for the benefit of our audience that we started on in September. So a lot of thought, a lot of man and woman hours have gone into reaching the point we got today, so good job to the whole team. Thank you, and staff. Thank you, Cliff.
Director Larry?
I echo Kay's comments, and that's where I'll leave it.
Thank you. Director Schlemmer?
I also echo Kay's comments. I also want to thank the audience for being here today and for staying here this long, because I literally thought I was kidding about lunch, but I'm not. And thank you for very good suggestions, and, and I, I appreciate that the board listened to those and incorporated those in some of our decisions today. Thank you.
Director Rhodes?
I think just as a point of information, I would say that, Director Vines, your meeting has lasted two hours and 44 minutes.
Thank you.
And that is close to a budget and finance rate.
I know, so would you please stop talking, so I don't want to hit the three-hour mark?
There's a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I want to congratulate Christine for being elected the new treasurer. She has been an incredible asset to budget and finance for the past two years, and I don't think there's anyone more qualified than she is to be our new treasurer, so to that degree. And I also, and I also want to congratulate our three, the, the remaining three new officers. I, I, I think that it's, 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 these are good selections, and, and I think that they will make sure that we're, we're in the right direction, so congratulations. And thank the audience. And thank the audience for being here, for, you know, they were supposed to serve refreshments, and, and that did not work out so good. Talk to, talk to Lisa.
Tick tock, tick, tick tock.
Thank you, Director Hammond.
Audience comments?
Karen Heddick, 106159, I just wanted to give you an update on the new library that's going in for the City of Surprise. It's going to be about a mile and a half from here. It's going to be completed and break, broken ground by the end of 2025 to 2026. I spoke with Seth, who is the executive over it for the City of Surprise, and he reached, said that he would reach out to the librarians here to tell them what kinds of services we're going to go in there, so that they could see what would, what they could enhance or change from whatever we were trying to do. Okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And Cora had an emergency preparedness seminar put on, on Saturday, I believe it was, last Saturday. If you go to the Cora office, they can give you some of the information that was given out there, if anybody wants to have some of the details there.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Our next workshop is going to be May 17, 2024, 9:00 AM, right here. And then the next governing board regular meeting is May 23, 2024, same place. I'm sure the show will be just as fun. I greatly appreciate.
We had one online comment.
Okay, we have one online comment?
I, I'm sorry to, to do this to you, I know you're trying to get on. This is again from Bruce Lee, 135422. And he said, "I am truly disappointed with the board selecting a project based on want and not need, and throwing the budget into disarray, and trying, and with trying to come up with another contingency should the minimum wage law pass."
Thank you. I truly appreciate everybody being here and, and staying with us through this almost three-hour meeting. We greatly appreciate, appreciate it. Shows your stamina and your love for the community as well. Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned.